All right, I call this border selections meeting to order for Tuesday, July 21st. We have Phil Crossman, Donald Poole, myself, Jake Thompson, and Pam Alley is joining us virtually. Andy Dorr, town manager. Approved agenda, and we'll be approved the agenda presented. Seconded by Jake Thompson, all those in favor? And Pam, if you'll say yay or nay, please. Pam, are you there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, minutes, approved in minutes from the July 7th, 2020. A change in. Our second motion, all those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, everybody vote yes, Donald Poole stings. Approving sign, treasurer's warrant, number three, silver. Seconded by Phil Crossman, all those in favor?
Yes.
Communications, G E I consultants, project number 1901606.
So just a communication that came in, there's a notice of intent to file for a permit in Rockland for them to do some improvements to the fish pier. Again, just a notice of intention to files and just sharing and passing it through as it came to our office. There's proposed dredge sites, presumably somewhere in the vicinity of some of the fishermen, I would assume, out here. But again, just a notice of intent to file.
Is this gonna start next year?
That's the, if they dredge, that's the timeline that they would be dredging. Dredging or dumping, yeah.
It was like with all that there, you wanna do something better than just dump the removals?
So when that, if that comes out and they end up filing that, we'll get notice of the, of the permit or the application, and that'll be public, and there's normally an opportunity for people to have public comment.
Okay, what we're gonna do for speakers in the floor, I understand there are a couple people.
Um, there's just, I assume there's one, I mean, there's a couple on the calls, if you wanna inquire if anyone has any.
Does anybody have anything for the board to consider? In the general public? Any, there are none, we'll go on to committee and department reports, appointments, annual appointments.
So you have, Tonya made a breakout there. So just an, as annually, there's a bunch of positions that need to be approved.
I move we approve. Phil, that's your appointment. Seconded by Phil Crossman, all those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, group commissioners report.
Yeah, they're trying to emphasize that at the moment. I know some culverts that they were planning on replacing up on Fishhead Road at some point this week, whether they're allowed. Yeah, I've had to touch up a couple gravel roads already. Otherwise, position is posted for the full-time driver laborer. So far, it's one applicant, so keep that open for at least this week and see if, you know, if there's other interest as well.
Uh, treasurer's report.
So I gave you, wasn't in the packet, I sent it, I printed it off. It's in that other stack of papers there, but just an overview of, there are still a few accounts payable presumably that would be coming in, invoices that would be coming in that were for services or things purchased in last fiscal year now. Else can be charged off, this is where it stands as of today without that accounts payable balance. You see on the, on the town side, with a few more things that will have to come in anyways, but as of right now, it's about 440,000 that was unspent.
Some of the Knox County taxes aren't in budgeted, we don't know when it's gonna be when we budget.
That or scenario when I put the numbers in originally. No, it might have been just carry, I carried over the wrong number, I carried over last year's numbers on that spreadsheet. No, we do know, we know now, because they run on a calendar year budget. No, the 566 total was what they budgeted, just a mistake on my part there.
Slightly over on insurance.
Yeah, and that was the, so with the insurance, they, they go, I believe, calendar year on that, and for the big ones, we kind of fly a little blind on that when we budget ours, because you don't know the other half of the year's gonna do. That's where when we do health insurance for the employees, we usually do about 10%, not knowing. And on the, on that one, the big one was workers' comp, I think we budgeted like 25% increase, and it was a little, whatever it was, the number we budgeted, it was a little higher than that even. So that's, again, that was just past injuries, and that'll hit a plateau at some point if we go without injuries, and then eventually it'll come back down, it's like a three to five year kind of capture, so.
Any other question? We'll go on to old business, Hurricane Island Foundation activated.
Yeah, I asked Bo, he said that if we, if we were to meet, we had been doing the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month before things got shook up, so if we were to meet two weeks from today, it'd be the first week in August, the first Tuesday. I know that date, he said that at the time I asked him, it was okay. I don't know if you wanted to do it on that one, or see if there's another date that would work better. You wanna do it before selectance meeting or separate from?
How long do you anticipate it taking?
Uh, could be 15 minutes, could be an hour, I assume at least a half an hour.
Five instead of 5:30?
Yeah, we could answer quickly, we'll have that as our first order of business.
That first week would be okay?
Yeah.
What was, what day, day numbers, like was the first Tuesday and August?
First Tuesday, I think it's August 4th.
That's fine, I, I don't believe I'll be going anywhere, I'd be anywhere, the other guy.
Yeah, it'd be Tuesday, August 4th.
I was over there for like two seconds today to pick up a phone.
All right, we'll go on to new business, Knox County Sheriff contract review.
I believe, I met with most of you, I don't know, I got ahold of Jake. Just wanted to touch base with you all, I am planning to meet with the sheriff on Thursday. About the contracts, again, we've been operating without one, but still under the same conditions that we had had if we did sign, so. Wanted to circle back around, because when we put in these, these lists of proposed changes before, it didn't include the, you know, the housing bit, and we said we'd take that up for the next contract, well, we might as well take it up now if we're gonna be reviewing all this. So just wanted to throw it up there before I meet with him, other things that have come to mind or wanted to talk about. For some folks I had asked, I did put up a small, short timeline, going back as far as the, the study that was done in '06 about the local police department. Didn't go further than that, and I'm sure there's a lot more missing in between, but I know there's been some frustration amongst the board and with the contracts and with the ability to fulfill it and terms of it, so just being, I'll be meeting with them soon if there's things that you wanted to have come up, consideration, just figured we'd talk about it.
I'd like the commissioner to come out and talk to us.
Our commissioner?
Yes. I'm not pleased with what has occurred since that incident in June. I don't believe current deputies should be working out here. I'm, I'm not gonna sign a new contract. I don't see why we should be paying extra money for a service that we don't, in my opinion, receive. We already pay in two county taxes that were required before, which is supposed to provide us with police coverage. That's how I feel, I, I don't. It's like all of a sudden after that incident where, in my opinion, Knox County dropped the ball, I know there was only so much they could do, but still, we had a murder, first time in our town's history, it happened on their watch. And ever since then, now all of a sudden it's, oh, we're gonna pull everyone over for this and that, which we've been telling them about for years. So it's just too little, too late, my thing. So I wanna hear what commissioner's plan is to fix the issue, the trust that's been broken, in my opinion, between Knox County Sheriff and this community, so. That's, that's how I feel right now. I am collecting other statements from other residents, and I will have more information to provide at each case. Things need to change. What we can do in the town, I don't, I don't know yet, and maybe they have some suggestions and we can, we can try to do that, but I am not pleased with what has turned out.
You know what, do you know what happens in like Peaks Island and those places, I mean, they're part of Portland, they don't part of Portland anymore, they've seceded, so do they pay Portland to do their?
Yes, they're all over different, Peaks is still part of Portland, or at least it's.
Some of those islands are.
Some are, Long and Chibig are their own, I'm trying to remember, I feel like they both have their own kind of set of contracts. Peaks Island, I think they struggle for coverage from the, from the city at times, and in the summertime, I think they send a reserve or, you know, someone's able to go out there and respond to things, but I don't think that they have any, as much proactive as some would like to see.
Well, it's been about 15 years since I started time with Peaks Island, but for all those years that I did spend time there, they even have their own building there and cover, their coverage was, so it's constantly an officer. On Peaks Island, they're always, they, the Portland Police Department keeps a building on Peaks Island. And it might be kept by the, you know, in some way, either, it's not just for the police department, but they have their own, they had their own patrol unit, and it was not hard to find that police officer ever.
When you look at down the coast, down east, Swans Island has a contract with their county sheriff, slightly different terms.
Quite similar to ours.
It's similar, but you know, the, some of the breakdowns across here are very different. And I think you'll find a lot of towns that rely on sheriff coverage generally, probably a lot of them feel, if you're on the peninsula, probably generally feel that there could be more than less, and it's just a reality of manpower, I presume. But you talked about, you know, from folks on Deer Isle and Stoneington, I mean, similar thing, I mean, they have county coverage. I think they might even have a contract as well sometime. So some of it's just trying to understand the expectations, and that was one of the, on the spreadsheet I had shared, just kind of things to get you thinking about, you know, as we talk with the sheriff, I mean, there's a contract part, but take it a step further, and if there is frustration or, you know, not feeling as though, you know, our contract is serving us in the best way it can, you know, how, how do you, what are the expectations, and how do we see that they might be able to restore or change how they police out here?
I think we need just a little bit more accountability, like we don't know. I mean, if they get a call, we don't know, like, if they respond to it, or if they don't respond to it, or, I mean, until someone comes up here and complains, we don't know that there's an issue, and, I mean, some people just give up and don't. I mean, that's kind of, I've been asking for more accountability for years, that's just what I have. I, I just want, I want, if there's a call, I wanna know if they, maybe not every call, but I, I mean, it would be nice to know, like, if there's a call, that they responded to it, or that they at least called to check on it, and it was, how it was handled, not just this list of, oh, there's 42 traffic stops and 13 hangups, like, do they, do they find out why someone called and hanged up? Or, you know, I just want some more accountability, that's what, all I want to see. What we should get for what we pay.
I would like to see more accountability too, and part of the difficulty is that people have become so exasperated over the years that they tend to vent their frustration on social media instead of registering them either with us or you or with the Knox County. And so when moments like this come, when we're reconsidering contractual obligations, we don't have the kind of ammunition that we might have if everyone made an official noise every time Knox County failed to respond. And they do fail to respond, or if they respond, they respond inadequately, and part of that reason is because they don't live here. And so you can only expect somebody to get here so quickly when oftentimes the urgency is of course completely important.
So you brought the point that I think is important, it's, there's not saying here resident deputy. I don't believe anywhere, but I believe so. If we are going to pay this contract along with county taxes, then the deputy assigned to patrol this island should be residing on this island, at least during the time that he is, you know, in any time he might be called to do it. The, you know, to get from North Haven to here, you know, into town here, takes a while. Even in the best of weather, let alone a rotten night in the middle of winter.
So some of that goes to the expectation piece, right, and so there's parts of the county at certain times of the day where there's only two deputies covering all of Knox County, even if you take the islands out of it, you know, the geographical range in which it is, I mean, there, there are instances where they, they've said that there are 20, 30, 40 minute response time even over there to get to places, and that's not saying that that's right, it's a fact. And it's similar to here, so coming from North Haven, it's not saying it's right or wrong, it's just it's a fact, and so, yes, if someone lived here, I think the contract certainly needs to be modified to make it clear that that's the expectation.
But on the mainland, those 30 or 40 minute wait times, they're not paying $150,000 or even. That would be one thing, if we were just paying our county taxes and we had to wait 30 or 40 minutes, that's fine. But if we're gonna be paying this extra hundred and whatever, $1,000, then it should be a little bit more substantial coverage, is all.
You're saying?
I also feel that the, the deputy being on North Haven, living there, so it takes 40 minutes to get from point A to point B on the mainland, sometimes you can't get from North Haven to Vital Haven because of the weather. So I think that's a poor excuse to compare the time that you can get from one place to another. I agree, Eric, the deputy, if we're gonna pay the money, should reside on Vital Haven.
Great, you've seen the contract that we're paying for housing, for, you know, electricity, fuel costs. If we're paying for that, why are they living here?
We haven't been able to.
Just a stipend at a lesser amount, housing stipends, it says it will contribute to housing, but it doesn't say where. So it's a lesser amount than what's, what's allocated.
Yeah, I, it's, if it's gonna be in the agreement, we're gonna provide lodging or whatever it is. They should be here so that they can respond at a more timely manner. But again, I, at this point, I'm not willing to sign a new contract, so there's some serious changes. But again, I would like to speak with Knox County Sheriff, see what they have proposed, what they are thinking about. I don't have, I don't have all the answers.
With the permission?
Yes, I, I don't have all the answers, and it needs to be a group effort, a team effort, whatever, however you wanna put it. This has been going on for too long, in my opinion, where we've been saying, these things aren't being done, these things aren't being done. Nothing happens, and now the worst-case scenario has happened, and it's handled very poorly, I think.
I have statements from people of our supposed resident deputy sharing details of that crime at parties. I don't, I don't know, I don't know if it's legal or illegal, I haven't bothered to look at main section on that, but at the very least, it's wildly, wildly so. Grounds for immediate dismissal, one would think, but.
I'd be glad to know issues.
Right, does anyone else, so, Andy, perhaps the next step should be set at a date?
Which one of those three commissioners is our commissioner?
Commissioner Paulman represents us, I think, and North Haven. And I know the sheriff is, you know, willing to have conversations with us, so I'll meet with them Thursday morning to, you know, along with the items on the list there, or on the screen that we talked about last time, I'll bring up the housing piece again. Again, we didn't have it addressed in that draft, it was last sent in, and invite them to have a, go in a meeting with you.
Right, I'd like them to be here, so we can basically officially, hey, these are the complaints we have received, we are now communicating it to you, what are you gonna do about it? So I agree that in the past, people complain to us, but not complain officially, so it's on the record. I wanna make it official, so that something has to be done.
So to make it official, just from Pete's permission clause, you said you had statements?
I'm gathering statements, but I, I wanna have that information presented to them, so that they can say, hey, this is coming from this community, these are people who live here, these are their complaints.
I would advise you to ask them if it's okay if those statements were put on the official letter. And we bring those statements to a meeting like this, that they automatically become part of the public record. That's what I would advise. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to LRAP contract, Main Street capital funding.
So this was the, the grant, we put, one of the grants that we put in for, for Main Street. This is the, oh, I'm sorry, LRAP, not the grant. We do certainly assign the grant agreement for the MPI, the LRAP one's just the, the funding that comes in.
All right, excuse me for a minute, if there's somebody, a member of the public right now who'd like to speak, how do they let you know or?
Oh, there's a, there's a couple on the call today, but no one's raised their hand or spoke up to speak, so.
Okay, so there's an option that they have, that they haven't acted on.
Yeah, and I had advertised on the agenda this week to reach out to me for the login information. Same thing, different names, so we do have the contract agreements for the Main Street project, the funding, so we put in a grant for, for a project, total project cost for this grant of 1.3 million, I think it was, 1.26. And the state has the MPI program, municipal partnership agreement or initiative. And so they've, they've awarded us $625,000 towards that project. That's one, one grant of at least three big ones that we're trying to secure. There's another one that's out still to be, see it to be determined if we are accepted for it. I think that one was a little over a million. And then the next one would be the Northern Borders, or that was Northern Borders, then there'll be the Economic Development Agency Grant, is what Gabe and McCutter are working on now, and that'll be for, I think, over $2 million. So this was, this was the first one that timeline came up for, so with the Main Street project, and the downtown master plan and what we've outlined, you know, tentatively so far, if this is something that you want to agree to, give us a good chunk of the, a good, a good head start on that project in addition to our reserve funds.
See, our sidewalk reserves is, what, 300, 400?
Yeah, I think between the, the roads and the sidewalk reserves that we have, again, the road reserve is limited to the state aid roads for the most part. I think between the two of them, we're about 750.
So we can match this and without anything else, so just, I mean, if we don't sign it quickly, will they give it to someone else? Is that a fear?
Yeah, I mean, they're looking for the contract to be signed, to be able to lock it in. We have, I think, like, two years to complete, and usually you, you need a sort of extension for whatever reason, there's always variables that come up that you can't account for, there's usually some leniency.
Construction shall commence in 18 months, and completed in 36, so it's really three years on me. So we have to start it by 2022.
And you'll have costs incurred before the construction too, right, so some of, some of these grants will allow for us to have some of the engineering and that special cost associated with it completed too, so.
This is just for the drainage and the sidewalks, or can it be used for the road part too?
Yeah. So with the, with this state contract, actually, it's, the, the state monies from this program won't deal with the sidewalks. So they're gonna, this MPI is gonna be road and drainage, that's the state aid road. So we're partnering with them to help put additional resources into the state aid roads that wouldn't otherwise go into it. And so generally, what they did last year was that, that skinny mix of that light capital pavement, that's what they generally do on low-volume, low-reuse state aid roads, and if a town needs or wants to do more than that, and it's ahead of their timeline to do more, then there's these NPIS where you can enter these agreements with them and split the cost to do more. So that grant program will allow us to have a money to match potentially other grants from other sources as well.
I think it's probably good that we accept it.
I move we sign the LRAP contract.
It just has Amy's name on there, right?
Seconded by Phil Crossman, any more discussion?
Are we, are we going to have Amy signing, because it's his name on the contract?
And that, yeah, I amend my motion to read that we authorize the town manager to sign the LRAP contract. Seconded by Phil Crossman, all those in favor?
Yes.
Hello, following a home, that means some real progress has been made toward sidewalk and drainage improvement in Main Street. All right, we'll go on to Carrying Place Bridge bid review.
So with the, the bids that went out, the bid that went out, there was one bid cast and returned to us. Unfortunately, the, the bid came back higher than anticipated or estimated for construction. The estimated construction budget was 450,000 for that, that bridge, and the bid came back at 694 by 50. The bidder was Jake Barber. Little breakdown there to show you what, how, some of the numbers in there. I know one thing, the engineers are still gonna follow up with them, just, just for the sake of understanding a little bit more. You know, the cost of a, of a culvert, pre-cast culvert is not, the culvert itself is nowhere near that total direct estimate they got, direct hope they got, so there's parts of it, just when you do the bidding process, that, you know, you have to account for and assume things and, I'll say had, but you have to be sure if you're gonna give a lump sum bid, you don't wanna get owed on the contractor's side, and that was what they felt they, was required to get the job done.
Andy, what did you say about the culvert?
The pre-cast culvert, as I said, it was the, the direct buy cost for the culvert itself is not the majority of that $300,000. The culvert itself came in at almost a tenth of that.
So that price there is the cost and install as well?
And the, so the heatable piles that have to get put in, they're not sure how many there would be, so it's, we're assuming that there's other costs associated with, you know, just beyond the culvert directly.
Well, I mean, I would think there'd be a cost for the culvert, then they have the mobilization, and that would, I would think that would include moving the culvert out here, not lumping into that top number, I mean.
Again, again, the engineers are gonna reach out to the bidder just to get an understanding of some of it, I mean, when we received, received the bids for the garage, the mobilization for the garage and salt shed construction was a third to half of what the mobilization for this is. So we don't, not, I mean, totally not knowing, you know, is there something more involved in mobilization, or was it just the untenariarity of doing business, you know, that scale of business out here, because it is a complicated and costly thing to figure out. It is a complicated and costly thing to figure out. We've never been out here. Um, there were things that we talked about trying to do and, and provide information to the bidders before they submitted bids.
Jake Barber's been out here, his trucks are on the ferry.
Yeah, certainly different than probably bringing out just a truck. But, yeah, so I mean, I think that's something that we need to understand and try and utilize engineers to find out from people that have bid or have done work out here to understand, because we got a lot of capital projects and can't keep putting things out to bid and being this far below the estimate. Uh, with the estimate, so, uh, there's a lot for us to learn still with the bidding climate that we have as well as what it takes to get jobs done out here.
Well, there's not so much, you know, this is another bid prepared for, prepared by. I don't know.
What impact?
What impact, sorry. So I mean, it's not really, it's not so much for us, you know, they're supposed to know what the bidding environment is.
Right, it's just.
Well, they went on and asked a bunch of people what they thought it would cost that they've done business with. And then we put it out, why none of those companies bid on it, so I mean, if one of those companies had bid on it. But they probably got bigger projects where they don't need to put people on an island.
Yeah, I mean, the feedback they got in particular on the bridge was the bridge itself, I mean, it's just too small a project for a big company to come out, out here and all out. Housing has become a big one for both projects, trying to figure out housing. You've got crews with both, with companies that are looking to put bids in that either have employees or, or workers that maybe don't want to, or maybe they do, don't mind coming out here for weeks on end to do a project, being away from their families. Um, you know, that's a hard thing to try and compensate for. Um, but then there's the cost of housing and where, where do you go? And so the housing thing came up for both of these as a, what do we do? And it's going to continue to be a thing for us as we try and do capital projects out here.
I thought that the whole point of doing the bridge was to do it in the off season. So getting a place to perform to stay would have been a little bit easier than, I mean, maybe the town rat was quite. I would assume that we tried to start everything in September where you could get housing more readily and the ferry boat's easier and everything, but I don't know how people bid on stuff.
That was the thought going into it.
Okay, I didn't know. I couldn't remember reading like the start dates. I thought if I saw it for this one was like November to like April or something like.
Yeah, there was a window for this one because you're in the water and having to work to the permit, extra permitting. So, you know, one thing we, we had talked about after the bid came in, the engineer was the, the temporary road at eighty-nine thou, estimated at eighty-nine thousand or bid for eighty-nine thousand. And then the not included in, in this list is the permitting fees associated with that temporary bridge. So that was another sixteen thousand dollars if you put that permit in. Um, let's hear over a hundred grand just for the temporary bridge, I think is easily double what the first group of engineers were anticipating it might be. So then we started talking about, well, geez, unfortunately, it's too long of a project. I think it's like they figure estimating at least three weeks, two, three weeks, probably closer to three. You know, if you only had a couple households up there, maybe you could do something to get different means to get across or temporary housing. But there's a lot of households and a lot of work that gets done on that side of the bridge almost every day. So I don't think that that's a reality, you know, but we did talk about it briefly.
Or if you could cut it down to a week, I mean, you can probably do it, but not three.
So nothing back on this bid, no one pays?
Uh, they didn't. I mean, either, either way, it's, uh, we don't have a, you know, it's well beyond what the approved budget is. Yeah, the six forty, uh, the, uh, six ninety-four, five fifty is, doesn't include the engineering and all that. So again, a construction, estimated construction cost, uh, for the purpose of what we were going in at was four fifty. It's almost two hundred and fifty percent.
Permitting and all the engineering, where, again, another fifty percent over on it?
Yes. Purging like double, I can't know.
How does the military build those temporary floating bridges? Like, I mean, is there a way you can rent those and put one of those up real cheap, uh, you know, for, instead of putting all this dirt in? I mean, they do it everywhere when they're.
They leave, they leave, they tend to put us a limit.
Right, I mean, all we need to do is get a car across.
Right.
I mean, you think that would be cheaper than, and I don't know what permitting, but cheaper than trying to construct a big rock thing up there. I don't know if anyone's ever looked into it, but I just thought of it when I was watching.
I know we asked a bit of Gertlin Dorsey when they worked on it with us. I don't recall now what the answer was to that four years ago, but, um, you know, we can certainly ask again of Woodman Karen to see if it's something they can look into.
I mean, I don't know how, how it works and where it drains all the way out, it's all bonded, it has to always be water. Obviously, I'm not an engineer, but you think that would be easier if they could get it worked.
They are going to, again, circle back with the bidder, just, just get a better understanding of what some of this was. Are there ways to, it's like with the garage, are there ways to value engineer and modify any of it with the bid? Um, they're also going to look in-house to see if it's something that, um, Woodman Karen can just oversee in subcontract. And can they, they got a team within that sometimes does design build things. So they are going to just look within, within the company to see if it's something that their, that division feels could be done or not and just give us feedback.
Is this still open for additional bids or is it closed?
Well, potentially we'll have to reopen it at some point.
Yeah, I mean, if there isn't a, a, a means to get done, you know, that feels in the best interest of the town. I mean, we might have to just go back out to bid with.
I mean, is there, is there another bridge project coming up in the future? We could bundle two of them together maybe and.
Presumably, Wayne's Island Bridge will have to still get the work done, uh, like they never did come out. Well, it is, but the state won't be doing the work. They'll be putting a bid out for someone.
Right, it has to be more extensive, be both.
Right.
And I believe the state actually turned down all the.
Yeah, I mean, if you recall, I mean, unfortunately, for whatever reason, we're in a time now where, we saw last year, a lot of state paid jobs and projects just got canceled because their bids came back way higher than, but. Whether it's labor costs or the ability to have a lot of jobs and you don't really, I don't know, there's a lot of question marks right now out there. So presumably you'll reject, you want to reject that bid, that you're in.
Yeah, right, sorry. I move that we reject the bid from Jake Barber for the first project.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole. All in favor?
Yes.
I mean, can you go, can you yourself go back at him and say, would you go for this number?
I think you'd be better off trying to figure out, you know, with the engineers, but also just to understand. I mean, I think it's really wise to understand the, did they just overestimate in some areas and just missing some information? Or are we just needing to realize that this is just what the cost to be worked out here? You remember the sidewalk years, was it probably four years ago, you put the sidewalk bids out to go to the ferry terminal? And those came back two or two hundred and fifty thousand over what was expected.
That's, that's several years ago.
Right. So I mean, there's, there's something about working out here that scares contractors on big jobs and it's.
They're very nice people.
There's a lot that can go wrong with the ferry boat. You're at the mercy of, of the weather and someone else to transport you. And that's not something that contractors like to see because there's a lot of work, it's just lost money for them.
Because if they don't make the ferry, then they're just, they get paid.
Yeah, again, paid to. All right, it's the one proposed EMS rates. Thank you, Kerry, for being so patient. I meant to make the motion before this is beginning of the meeting.
Good job, Eric.
Yeah, well, it's just usual me screwing up.
Uh, so it's been a little, uh, while since we've looked at the rates again, and I think it was twenty eighteen, maybe the last time we did. And I think we, all we really changed was the, that ambulance wait time and I think the, the airplane costs. Um, so there's been a few, the Medicare rates were updated, uh, this past year. Other fees have gone up, like the ferry boat fees have changed in last year. You see, the, the biggest increases are on the ferry costs on a percentage base there. Um, we do, then the rest of them, I did just try to keep it around three percent. Um, unlike the ALS one, do BLS, um, to try and keep it close to what the Medicare rates are.
Andy, we.
Oops, sorry.
Andy, we did add in the South Thomaston to the airplane.
Yeah, so when we take the plane over, there's times, uh, every time, someone's got to pick up the patient over there. South Thomaston, we have an agreement with them that Kerry worked on and, uh, we were trying to use before. And, um, at times, it requires a paramedic, for example, or if there's a paramedic working with them, we, there's a hundred and twenty-five dollar fee. And we pay that. So that's something that should be included as a cost of flying a patient over. Otherwise, we're not going, we can't bill for it, so.
What is T D H?
All right, so that, that column there is the billing company we use. And that was just the recommendation they had was to, just as a starting point, just take the rate you have today and, and multiply it by forty percent. And so that's what the forty percent would look like if we had done that. So it gives you comparisons, you know, some of the, unfortunately, collecting on insurance for medical stuff and ambulance fees is unfortunately a game that's difficult to play. You never get all of it back. Um, and so, you know, trying to figure out, you know, oh, see, you know, services that are in it to make money and running for profit, they have to overbill certain patients, right, the ones with private insurance that sometimes pay more. We're not in a position where presumably we're trying to, we're not going to make money on it, right? We need to break, it's close to break even or whatever the goal you set for it is to collect revenue. Uh, we're a long way from that generally.
So do we get these raw rates, I assume?
We are rural and I think in some cases super rural, um, I think is what it's called. So, um, we should look at something similar to what that is and that's, that's what Medicare's willing to pay.
So we, I mean, you get seventy-five percent on most of the line, right? I don't think that would be good. I mean, seems fair. I don't think many people should be upset. I mean, we have to pay them service.
Right, costs go up, unfortunately, they get past it.
Being in the ferry things, we don't have any control right now. Those are the biggest increases. So if they want to complain, they can complain to the governor or.
Complain, complain to Mark Taylor, he's very receptive.
Yeah, I mean, we've spent about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year for the last four years. Um, for three years on the ambulance service. And I think we budget for revenue at about fifty and sometimes we see as much as a hundred. And so every year you're, you're subsidized to some of it, presumably some of it just goes to a collection if it has to. Um, or it eventually might come back, um, but every year if you look at that on some surface.
Yeah, well, I mean, we try and collect money at the transfer, not that we should compare the two. But that's, we try and break even on just what we send away, not on the, the wages. So I mean, is that what we're trying to do here?
I've never, I've never heard of what the goal is. I mean, whenever you look at rates and I, I remember hearing about the transfer station goal at one point. But I don't know if on the EMS side, if, if there is, I mean, a lot's changed in the last few years on cost of things, so.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if there was a goal that we were trying to meet. I never heard. Do you ever hear anything here? You better get along here.
No, just trying, we're just trying to get off ambulance fees.
Yeah. Was there like a goal to collect, you know?
Dude, I feel like that number has been thrown around before, but I can't.
Well, I mean, in last, we know what the goal is, these numbers seem fine, but then.
Well, I move we approve the proposed rates for the first one. Second.
And they're obviously good with Kerry, she wrote them, right?
I, I, I put them up there. I mean, usually in the past, the, the person that's on it, running a call isn't generally too concerned about the the collection and chasing the money. Uh, they need to fill out the reports that we have a chance to get the money. But, um, in the past, there was a little bit of a gap there. So I mean, I, you know.
Obviously Kerry doesn't have any objections to these.
Well, I shared it with, I don't know if there was any that did come up that jumped out at her or Kerry, was there any thoughts on or concerns with any of those?
No, I think they look good. I mean, I don't think we've gone up a lot i- in any area other than things that actually have been, become more uh, expensive as far as the ferry and the plane. But, um, the other stuff has gone up marginally and other people have gone up a lot more, so I think we're very safe.
My motion has been seconded by Donald Poole. All in favor?
Yes.
Um, Department of Public Works back of possible consideration for purchase.
I gave you on your board packets, four, four bids, three for brand new machines, one used one. And then yesterday I got another quote for another, a different used one. Um, Jesse had come in, um, from that weekend. Uh, and so I have a spreadsheet here that shows, you know, the base price for each of those, whether they're new or used. And I didn't add trade-in values to the other two because only the one company had given us trade-in value. I don't know.
Trade-in value is only eleven thousand dollars.
That's what they're offering. That's, it couldn't be, you know, negotiated.
Right?
It does.
It leaves, it could be used at the dump or somewhere, like you said, to let it go with the last move. That's just my feeling.
Yeah, I mean, they.
And that's the way I feel, I mean, I don't know.
Kenny's pointed out that it, you know, I don't know to the extent of the, the dollar amount of, of work that had been done on it. Um, you know, but he did mention that there's some structural or some steel on there that would need to be replaced on it. Um, there's obviously tires that have to put on it still. And so, I mean, you, you're probably looking, I'm, I'm guessing at five or six, at least five or six, if not ten grand probably. And improvements, I think it was two years ago that we put about ten grand into that one. Um, this year we didn't have to luckily put much into it all. Um, doesn't get used much to big point, you know, whether it's worth holding on to for that little of a, a trade-in quote or not, up to. Um, it's not something that's proposed to be covered in through a loan from, for next year's budget. It's not something that's, you know, proposed to be purchased outright next year's budget. So if you were to consider doing this, it'd be to use the reserve funds that have been accumulating for the last few years in the public works equipment. Um, which is right now at about a hundred and two thousand dollars. Close to put another twenty-five in it, I believe, this year at town meeting. So you'd have enough after, even without that quote, um, to be able to go with one of the options, if that's what you wanted to do. Without the trade-in value, um, you'd be able to, you know, buy the machine and still get at least, at least, um, and I think the one thing it doesn't have is a thumb arm, neither of the used ones do. And so at a minimum, we want to make sure that we're getting a thumb put on. Otherwise, a lot of what we use it for would be useless on the back of the part. Um, you know, whether we, whether we jump on and, and get the hydraulic front coupler right from the get-go or whether we let that come out of equipment repair and the operating budget, um, is a whole nother thing.
Well, either way, either way, you're fine, so.
There is one lease option.
So their, their lease options were, you know, they don't offer, what I was thinking, like a, a lease rent kind of thing. Uh, they're all leased owns. I mean, it's just like going to a bank, getting lease financing basically. It's not, not what I was thinking they would do.
You've got to lease it and you take it back and do one.
Right.
Probably makes sense. I don't know what you're going to do.
I think for us with just one piece, I mean, it's less likely, I mean, some people just do the three-year thing and then go back and draw a payment or whatever. But that's, that's what it was worth for three.
Is one of these ones, the one that we have?
Uh, the Beauregard.
Yeah, there's two ones that were used, I mean, one has a warranty and one doesn't.
So they were able to get the warranties on both the used ones, I believe, because there's so few hours and they're still just, within a year old. Uh, but the one that's base price is at one oh nine nine.
That's the one that we have.
That's the one we have here right now. And that one's not, the front of that one's not plum for the hydraulics, I believe you said. There was a substantial difference in that one.
Well, I mean, between the two used ones, it's like a fifteen hour difference, I think.
Again, one of them, again, had the hydraulics in the front and the other one had to be added in. And that was part of the cost that he had given us in the one oh nine nine. It's not a separate add-out, you know, build out because this is something that you generally need, um, or have in the current one.
So what is that? What is your record on these?
I mean, you're at a point where, you know, if you guys want to, if you want to consider.
We had what, a hundred and twenty-ish and or a hundred and?
Hundred and two in there right now approximately and then propose another twenty-five to add to as we have been for the last five years.
Typically tomorrow, after tomorrow, we might have a hundred and twenty-five in there. If, a hundred and twenty-seven, if people, should we, can we wait until?
You can, I mean, you do.
To make sure we get the money before we make the decision or, I mean.
Either way, we have the money.
I mean, it's really about just looking at the equipment we have and whether, you know, we feel we're at a point, we probably put twenty, twenty-five grand in the cat. And the last work that got done on it was a lot better news than we anticipated when it went up there. It was only about thirty-five hundred bucks. And we were thinking it was going to be new injectors and a whole heck of a lot more. So, um, we were fortunate in that front, um, but it's got, I think.
Seems like they've gotten a lot of work on with this one. I mean, I've seen, seems like they've done a lot of attention in the last. Two months. Is it because it's easier to work with or just that it's been running the whole time?
I, it's a, it's a mixture of things. I mean, and the biggest thing is that it means dedicating time to do it. And there's always stuff to do and it, you know, the last few years we've been doing a lot of untravelled road work, surface work, uh, it takes up a lot of time. You know, just committing to the task of ditching is long overdue. So, you know, there's advantages to that piece of equipment that they prefer over the cat generally, its design and ease of use or whatever, but it doesn't, you know, one or the other doesn't make it easier or why they're doing it.
So they don't care.
We wanted the, we wanted the transfer station to stop becoming a reliable backup for public works. And so if it, if it goes out, puts them in a tough spot and that machine.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying we shouldn't buy one. I'm saying which, which option is the, the best option, I think.
I would go with that once the Beauregard, um, for the ninety-four, four sixty-five, including the trade-in. And it only has a hundred hours on it and it's coming with a warranty. Oh, it's, oh, maybe.
That's the one we added that just got on Monday yesterday.
Okay. I was looking at the paperwork. I wouldn't want to have to do that.
That, that one that came in yesterday with a base price on that was, it's the same machine, uh, just came from a different place and.
And it's got the one year warranty and the two year power, like what it says here, one year full machine warranty, two year powertrain warranty. I mean, I'm not really worried about the three year GPS watch part of it.
And that was a big part of when we were looking at it was to make sure we still, let me just see if I get it right here. I can, I can. I can verify that it does. I thought he said it did. It's about almost the exact same thing as the other one he reported us. It's not listed in there specifically, but I'll ask.
Yeah, one's just a couple thousand dollars more and it's got like better warranty, it would be better to go with that, I think, just to get.
I'll, I'll confirm it with him. He said he was able to get it. He had to ask. He was able to get it on the one you have, the one oh nine nine base price. And this one, he was almost the exact same thing. So I can ask.
So we, would we trade in the one that we have now? Would we just?
Huh? Is that what we want to do? We want to trade in?
I thought we wanted, I thought the discussion was to keep it in.
Yeah.
And then we'd have a backup. Or we'd take the one that we have at the transfer station and you, and put the one that we have now up there. Isn't that what you said? I can't remember.
Well, so the way we, I mean, the issues we have, right? So when it comes to winter time, you're gonna, you know, separating the salt sand storage from main street. If you go off of main street with it, you're gonna need a loader for that. And whether you choose to rent one for a couple of months out of the year, um, just have up there for that purpose, or whether you look at shifting and keeping all three units. I mean, part of it was not knowing what the trade-in value would be. If it wasn't going to be much, maybe it is worth it because it'd be a lot less use and maybe we can continue to get four or five, six more years at least out of it without.
How many years was it? Six?
Ninety-seven? I think it's a, I want to say it's a ninety-seven or oh-two, somewhere in that range.
The oldest one?
Yeah.
No, how?
The one we got now is a twelve.
And they're only going to give us eleven thousand dollars for that one?
For the one at the transfer station.
Oh, the really old one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Yeah, no, it's one of the transfer station that we had to look at.
Oh, I thought it was, okay. That makes sense.
I could have figured that out. Sorry.
That's why I was confused. Why they're only going to give us eleven thousand dollars for.
I'd hope the cat would get more. The cat's throwing out some years.
Sorry. Okay. Yeah, that makes sense to trade that one.
As soon as specified.
So we do have a question with warranty. So I move that we purchase the backhoe from Beauregard for, including the trade-in value for ninety-four, four sixty-five from the, from the public works reserve, correct? Equipment reserve. Fund contingent on warranty.
Second.
Seconded by Jake Thompson. Any more discussion? Hey, hold on a favor.
Yes.
The fourth and town manager.
All right. I know there's been a few requests from town committees, uh, members to use the space in here. Um, you know, they're having a hard time with participating in the, in the meetings on our behalf from their homes with the broadband, uh, that each of them might have. Uh, for some, it's just a limitation of, just as you had, a limitation of being able to conduct a meeting from a virtual standpoint instead of in person. Um, so I don't know how we feel. I mean, for me, I, if we were to consider it, it'd have, in my opinion, it'd have to be after hours and we're not open with the staff in here. You'd have to have it booked ahead of time. Still have to have no more than five people in the room by standards, you know, the guidelines they have, um, out right now.
So I mean. Why would it have to be after hours?
That'd be my recommendation. So you're not in here with the staff at the same time.
The cat is in there.
Yeah. I mean, there's sharing the same bathroom, the same entrance and we've still got business going on too.
I mean, but business hours end at five, right? I would think that.
Most committees need after that.
Yeah.
How many committees are asking for the space?
Uh, town committees, I think I've had at least three, if not four. Yeah, the planning commission and planning board I know are interested. The broadband committee, I believe, probably we've got members of that that can't even meet virtually to talk about broadband.
Who's the other one?
I mean, I'm fine with it after hours and as long as it meets the guidelines. Are they set to change in August or is it going to look the same? I mean, I know a lot of the other states aren't doing as good. I mean, Maine seems to be kind of. I didn't know, I couldn't remember what the phase for August first was, if it was going to be more lenient or if it's going to be the same.
Yeah, I mean, we're so far away from, you know, when that plan first came out in May now, I mean, I think the, the schools reopening guidelines is probably a good indication of, you know, how you might align returning, you know, some of the other services back, um, more available.
No, I just meant about, like, is it still going to be five people that can meet in this room or is it going to be like ten maybe?
I, I don't think there was anything past August to give us a better idea. I mean.
I know I saw F I E C having a meeting up at the van stand and someone was sitting in a different, all the way there around. I mean, that's an option if people come in, they're all six feet apart outside.
Yeah, for some it would work. It's just you gotta be able to have the remote option for, you know, should there be, you know, people involved or visiting or people that need to speak or.
And won't we allow town committees to meet here, providing they accommodate these, so they after hours mask and someone.
What about the cleaning part?
And that they have to, that's in here too.
Yeah, I know. Well, at least, at least one, if not two committees, you know, one of the members said that, you know, as a group, they were willing to, on their way out, wipe everything down. And so that would certainly help or we would just have to.
I mean, just like spraying the tops of everything off of the going out and stuff. Yeah, that's, that, I mean, are we going to supply like a bottle of stuff? Then, yeah, I think that would be pretty easy to do. I second that.
Move is seconded by Jake Thompson. Any more discussion?
This is Ellen. Um, I'm on the planning. Hi, I'm on the planning commission. We, uh, are you appointed a sixth person to the commission? So we now have six people. So we're over the five limit. Does that mean we won't be able to use the town office?
Be able to use it, but one would have to dial in, if you mind my understanding.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to follow the governor's orders as we're asking everyone else as best they can to do so, um, you know, you wouldn't want to put more than five in this space by those. Presumably some might still choose to be remote. You know, we've got, we've got a, a board member tonight who's at home joining us remotely still. So, I mean, I've seen that happen elsewhere where, you know, some, some have to come in or do come in and others still prefer to remote in. It's easier or, you know, safer for them.
Yeah, we've had a lot of trouble with the internet. The more people we have on the call, the more members, the more difficulty we have. Our last meeting was a nightmare.
Well, if you had five people here and one person following like we do tonight, it's not. It's not, it's not perfect.
I think that's the best we can do, Owen.
Okay. Well, thank you for considering it.
We do have the server and the computers. I do need to get that.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. So we've been in motion. Is there any more discussion? Hold on a favor.
Yes.
Got to coordinate with I T to have, um, the server set up. It is here. You know, when we do that, presumably it could be the better, you know, at least I'm assuming at least half day, if not a, almost a full day to be down, wouldn't have any of our computers running at that point. So whenever that happens, um, that's in at least. A few upgrades will be able to do to program and software as a result of getting the new server.
They can't come on Saturday?
What's that?
They can't work on it Saturday?
They may, I can ask. And there's still work that the staff would be doing, you know, if they're in here, it's just they wouldn't be able to be open to customers. And so, yeah, I can ask them if they can, so it doesn't interrupt.
Is it, is it that big of a deal to close for one day this time of year?
Don't think so.
Customers. We think it was pretty much.
As long as we advertise it ahead of time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem. Probably Saturday would cost more. I mean, if they, if they're willing to do it Saturday, you know, extra costs, fine. Otherwise, I don't see a problem.
Um, at the backhoe quotes, position posted. I think everything else is already covered. They have on there.
Reporting numbers.
The last meeting we talked about doing something to, uh, thank Carl for his service. We can settle on that. I'm sure we do. On behalf of the great tribute for anyone who's been for the race and for the wins, that would be a factor.
But I mean, I, I think the plaque up at the airfield.
Now he's telling a car.
Oh, oh, it's that couple. Oh, sorry.
I think it's, it sounds good to me.
Yeah, I think it's great. Thank you.
Okay. And then the Kevin, uh, one is memorial. There's already a big, a big movement that I put to among the public without our participation. Certainly without the participator.
Yeah. That's what kind of why I asked what the airfield was called last week because I wasn't sure that it was already made something.
Yeah, and I've looked into, I haven't found a whole lot of real good information on the history behind the naming that it has now.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was curious about.
Let's focus, I, we've looked at old town meeting minutes. I mean, from the best we can tell, you know, we do, there is a trust, um, Mary Talbot state, you know, trust that we have. And my guess is that money, the Mary Talbot trust.
Yeah, where'd you find?
That she left a trust to the, and some of her money was left to the town. And so we have a trust in her name. And so my guess is that at some point, some money was used from that trust to put into the airstrip. And in doing so, that, that's the best thing that we've found so far. We haven't found anything that officially authorized the naming of it yet. That's our best guess. There, there was, obviously Kevin does, did have and knew we still need to do the runway extension. Um, you know, and he, he'd been wanting to put a, um, like a shed city type thing up at the airport here. Um, so I don't know if some of that, we still didn't, need to move forward on some of that. And I don't know if, if there's a way to, you know, do some of that in, in his memory and, and consider renaming the airstrip in his name. I know some people have kind of asked if we could do that.
Some people what?
Asked if we could rename that runway in his name. So I don't know if that, I haven't looked into the process on that. Um, but some have asked if we could do that. I don't know if we wanted to kind of bundle all that together and, and try and do all of that and.
I mean, I think we should try and get the extension done. I mean, you know, I, I mean, you'd already put in a lot of legwork and finding out about the zone, the, you know.
Well, that's, that's the easy stuff. But I mean, when it comes down to the construction and getting all the material and doing it.
It was only, it wasn't. I thought. I can't remember what he said now, but.
Well, I suggest that, that you move forward in that vein and see if it's possible to rename the airstrip in his honor without offending or violating some earlier agreement.
I mean, could it be like the Kevin, one of his airstrip at the Mary Talbot? Field or whatever.
Right, yeah.
Like, I mean, providing the blank on in the football stadiums, it'll be like Pepsi Field and A T and T Stadium, you know, like they have kind of, I mean, like the, the runway could be dedicated to him and the, the whole area could be the Mary Talbot, that's kind of, you know. Maybe that's a way that we could do it also though.
See what the field itself after.
Oh, yeah, we should definitely do something. I mean, he's been instrumental in the airstrip here for a long number of years.
Um, now there's one more thing in the public bathroom. The several businesses have asked about opening the public bathroom. They will buy all the good. People are asking to use the bathrooms. I know places that have kitchens, ambulants will let people use the bathroom. And so the places that remain are very limited. Motel will be available to anyone who wants to use the one in the office, but it's not always someone man. So it's not apparent. So I'd like to see what we can do about opening that bathroom.
Still looking for a cleaner.
Uh, what have we done to look?
I've inquired with a few people that clean and haven't had been successful yet. I've inquired with a few people who do clean and just haven't been successful yet. So I was, I was going to see if anyone in house wanted to try and do authority on the payroll. I haven't done that yet.
I mean, is there anyone at, any of those businesses that would take it upon themselves or when asked their employees that, I mean, we pay the hourly rate, you know, but if one of their employees, they can spare one of their employees for a half an hour, you know, to go over there and clean the bathroom, then we could open it up, so.
Yeah, I mean, if anyone was interested, they could certainly reach out, but I'll continue to see if, if maybe there's someone on staff we already have as well that, you know, may want to do it as an extension of what they do now. As in addition to that, it's just a matter of having someone be able to want to clean it.
I'll make, I'll make a couple of them for you too. That's all I have.
Anyone else have?
Thanks for getting the bottle filled in on my own.
Did it?
I did.
Oh, okay. I still didn't the other day.
You were bottled. It's right by the, where the tuckle badge is. So that's why I thought they could fix.
Hey, I forgot to bring up the sewer rates. I don't know if you wanted to mention, talk about that quick.
Yeah, you want to do that now?
Sure. Um, so the commissioners, sewer commissioners met today. Um, and I did, I printed it out for this meeting. We did just meet today. Um, but a consideration for F Y twenty-one budget for the sewer. You know, one of the challenges we've had this last year in particular is, I think they, we spent about ten grand on just one of the pump stations alone this year. Mostly due to age. And there's some of the components of that were just at a time where they needed to be replaced. It was the hardest used, heaviest used one. Um, you know, but it's also a point in the system where pumps and other components are fifteen plus years old and they're just, they're also going to start. So one of our concerns raised there was about keeping up with the maintenance. Um, as that continues to grow, we did have the fiscal sustainability plan done that had, it was like capital improvement plan. So we, we do have, well, I think it was somewhere between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars worth of, uh, improvements to make, you know, that are kind of phased and planned over the next probably ten or fifteen years. You know, so keeping with that in mind, you know, there would have to be a slight increase, um, in the user fees to be able to get the to get the revenue to meet that. So the, the proposed budget's at three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, an increase of three point five percent. Um, so the rate, you know, if you, if you kept a fixed, uh, charge, um, seventy-six a quarter and the debt service fixed at forty-five still, and, and increase the volumetric charge. Um, so usually you gotta pay for it, um, to seven dollars a unit. Um, that would raise enough money. It would be a three point eight percent increase in the revenue. It'd raise, raise enough money to cover that proposed expense. That's what the commissioners proposed. Uh, I think it's a hundred cubic feet.
Okay. I assumed that was some kind of a volume, but I couldn't figure it out.
I think that's what he said when I asked earlier.
I mean, I'm not someone that uses the system, so I don't really know how much cost a normal family is not going to add a lot of money to it doesn't seem like it would, but I mean, it could.
I mean, we, and we can, maybe at the next meeting approve it and between then get some more information out. So I mean, the, the fixed, you know, and I think I'll use mine for example. I think we're between a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty a quarter. Uh, it's two people, it's minimal household use, uh, you know, but you've got a hundred and twenty-one dollars. Uh, it's two people, it's minimal household use. Uh, you know, but you've got a hundred and twenty-one dollars, but that's fixed between the debt service and the operating expense fixed charge. So.
Between ten and thirty dollars, ten dollars a month, maybe.
Right, so if, and if that's at five sixty a, a, a unit and you go to seven. You know, it's a, it's a slight increase, but the majority of it's a fixed fee. So I, we can run some of those numbers and look at a couple of different use types and, and give you an idea of what that. Increase would look like under a couple of different scenarios.
How does it work on the, um, the apartments? Do they just get a set?
So there's equivalent users associated with, so for a single house, it's just one user. And if you've got something like the apartments, each unit's a user. And, and so each unit is paying for a debt and a fixed and, and then the volume charge on top of that. So. Those are presumably some of our biggest users, um, those apartments in the hotel. Restaurants go based on how many seats they have and how many meals they serve.
But I mean, it's not gonna make someone at the apartment pay an extra look, not of what, what'll they get every month, is it?
We can work. I don't think the volume.
And they're the most, in, in the district that I can think of, they're somewhat of a, at risk and, you know, I wouldn't wanna. Put an extra burden on some of those older people that are on fixed income. That's all I'm worried.
Yeah, we've got ten, fifteen years of data now, so I mean, we could certainly go back and kind of project with some of those changes. I think it'd be pretty minimal. Um, but we can project that and look at what it would be for so, a couple of different people for the next meeting.
Phil? I have one more thing. The sidewalk that we've talked about before, going down over the hill here. North is really, really dangerous. And several people have complained about trying to walk in the street because the sidewalk's so dangerous and you wind up walking on the inside of that curve. What's the prospects of getting something done there?
What would you like then?
Well, I'd like a new sidewalk.
You wanna look at taking money from a reserve or public works budget, I guess we can, I mean, presumably it's gonna need some sort of design work. Uh, it's got layers. I don't know if we've looked at it close, but it's got, as you get from. Is it Ingersoll? That, or Star Street, uh, and down.
Yeah.
Uh, going to the intersection, it's, you can see the, the layers of concrete or asphalt or granite, um, in there. And so, I mean, I don't know if we. I don't think you're simply looking at just putting another layer of something on top of you there. Reconstruction.
Like a retaining wall and then fill it in and then they over, I think it's.
I mean, if you go in that route, you're, you're talking engineers presumably. Uh, it's along a state aid road. I don't think there's gonna be much help for it. Um.
You don't think, what?
There'll be much help for it financially from grants or anything like that. I mean, unless we can get a safe routes to school thing, which is probably pushing the limits on that range. It's gonna be so many miles or feet away from the school. I can see, I mean, the grant funding for sidewalks generally is not great right now.
And you say that it would require, um, engineers, uh, preliminary because it's a tight road or you're not sure?
I think generally it would be wise to consider an engineer's design, but, um, I don't know that it would require. You know, state usually separates itself from the sidewalks, but where there's not much shoulder or much in between, you know, it, it may or may not require. Some modification. You can't mu- move much in the road there. I mean, there's not much room. But it would be something you presumably want someone to design. The amount of itself usually runs about thirty, forty grand probably.
So would you look into that and put it on the agenda for the next week?
Sure.
Is that something we can just ask Kevin to look at and see if there's any quick fix that you can think of?
Can, yeah.
If you mind coming.
I mean, he's done good work on sidewalk for, and he's, he builds foundations. He might have an idea that could maybe be a temporary thing to do through.
Yes.
It's worth a phone call.
Yes, yeah, I can ask him.
Yeah. Does anyone else have anything? Uh, you were adjourned.
Second.
Seconded by Jake Thompson. All those.
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.